This meeting. Thank you, Karen. Yay.
Yay.
Now, it's all working. We just need to start the meeting more like 7:30. So, I am calling this meeting to order. I am certainly, I am chair of the Planning Commission, and with me is Commissioner Phil Bannister. And we do not have our other two members here this evening because of personal situations. They could not be here tonight. And also joining us is, as a guest, is the town manager, Karen Astley. And we also have with us a member of the public, Laura Campbell. And we have two guests here from Encore Renewable Energy will be presenting for us in a little bit. So with that, I'm going to review the agenda. And we've had scheduled to review for approval our meeting minutes from our last monthly meeting, December 3rd, but we will table that till we have a form so that we can properly do that. And that reminds me that our clerk is not here. So I'm about to take notes. Can you do that? All right. All right. Would you like a piece of paper?
Yeah.
Yeah, here you go. Okay. So we are tabling the draft meeting minutes, and the next item on our agenda is a presentation by Encore Renewable Energy, 4 o'clock, megawatt battery storage project that they proposed to site at the High-Low Biddy Road solar installation or adjacent to it. And they will present their information about their intent to file a petition with the Vermont Public Utility Commission for a certificate of public good to site that facility. We will talk further about that when we get to that item. We are also scheduled to have a presentation by Patten Green Commons, and they'll be providing an informational project overview, and we will learn more about that when they arrive at 8 o'clock. And that is the items that we have, other than to confirm our next meetings. We have quite a few meetings the next month. We have a lot of projects going on, so we'll review those. Are there any other agenda items today that are not, that have not been presented here? There are none, then we will proceed and welcome Encore Renewable Energy to make their presentation.
I sit here.
Yes, you sit up here, and actually, Laura, I know you like to follow these things. I'll give you a copy. Do you have a copy?
I did.
Can you give a copy, please, to Laura? And Karen, do you need one copy?
I'm not adverse to ink.
A colored copy would be great, Van.
And two more copies as well. Yeah. Okay, I just. Yeah. Yeah. You want to slide, oh, you said to slide down. It says we are not able to do screen sharing.
Okay.
When we pull this up.
I think we can.
Can we?
All right. But I gotta figure out how to do it. Hold on a minute.
But it's, do I have to set up my computer to do that? Can you share? Oh, they are also, all, all, a lot of the images that were in the slides are in the 45-day notice. Do you want to just, yeah, 45-day notice?
We can go off.
I've had enough technical. Yes, already. Yeah. I think that. Yeah. You're already impressing. That's right. Already. So, please introduce yourselves.
So, my name is Tegan Clark. I am a project manager at Encore Renewable Energy. It's a company based out of Burlington, Vermont, and I live there as well. And I am the project manager for this, I love Biddy Storage Project.
And with you, and with me is Jake.
Yes, my name is Jake Clark. I'm a vice president of project development for Encore Renewable Energy. Been with the company about six years. Would you like me to do a brief introduction of who Encore is, or is that?
I guess I think it's appropriate for the record for us to know who Encore is.
Okay, Encore Renewable Energy is primarily, historically, we've been a solar energy developer. But over the past five, six years, we've been developing energy storage or battery projects as well. Encore has been active in Vermont for a little over 15 years. Started by, founded by one of our CEOs. It was a very small shop for a number of years. When I joined, six years ago, I was the 10th employee, and now we're up to 40-something employees. We were just, Tegan and I were invited by Susan to attend a local economic development function. And in, just thinking about economic development, Encore is sort of a Vermont success story. We've come from a very small group, with very simple roots, to be a leading solar developer in Vermont, across New England, and branching out into other states across the country as well. Encore is a B Corp, so we talk about, we like to think about and talk about a triple bottom line, which is people, planet, and profit. The B Corp process is a pretty rigorous review process, or certified B Corp can have to get recertified every two years or so. Yeah, and of course, a, a business that is doubtless focused, and we really build our reputation around always working to do the right thing and to work with, to work with towns and neighborhoods and communities whenever there's, there are questions or concerns. We strive to help them in a collaborative, um, way. Pause there. Someone can take a seat. I was sitting there. I didn't even.
Just while we're taking a brief logistics break here, our meeting got started a half hour late because we had other logistical problems getting recording and meeting going, so we're running a little behind. Welcome to our guests, so it might be closer to 8:15 by the time we get to the Green Commons. I apologize for that.
Can you expand from the diamond little part in the middle of 7:30, so?
Yes.
Four, four half hours in here.
Yes. You're very welcome. Okay, I just wanted to let you know. Please proceed.
Okay, did you catch that?
Yes, I did. Do you have any questions about Encore Renewable Energy?
I have some flyers I can put out.
Okay.
All right, so that's sort of an introduction to who Encore is, and I'll pause there.
Yes.
And then, I think maybe the next natural step is to introduce the project, but is that?
That's right. I believe, Tegan, if you want to follow how you were going to do your presentation.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, um, well, kind of what, I mean, it, it, it's the same order of, yeah.
Okay. So this is a 5-megawatt, it's a battery, but it's an energy storage project. It's located next to the existing solar project off of High-Low Biddy Road. That project was developed and built by a different solar company, which operates here in Vermont. And the way that these, a lot of solar and these battery projects work is the solar company leases the project space from the landowner. That's how this solar project operates, and that's how the battery project will operate as well. There's a lease in place to secure our right to operate the project on, on the parcel.
Leased from whom?
Leased from the landowner.
Yeah, the underlying land.
Yes, the underlying land, right. I'm not sure it's appropriate to go, I'm already saying landowners' names.
No, no, I, as you was just trying to make a distinction of whether you're leasing it from the solar company or, yeah.
The solar, the existing solar project typically leases just the acreage that's occupied by their project inside the fence, so the, sort of the remainder of this parcel is still available for leasing. We will only be leasing the footprint of this storage project.
Gotcha, yeah, all right.
So, the 5-megawatt project, we typically say is enough to power, if it was a solar project, I would say it's enough to power a few hundred homes annually. A storage project, that metric is different, because a storage project, it stores energy that, that, it stores energy from the local distribution grid, and then when it's called upon to dispatch energy, it dispatches energy. So, in theory, it would be able to power the same number of homes, but for a much more limited time. As the battery discharges, it loses its stored energy. But the, the primary purpose of these storage projects, Green Mountain Power has an interest in seeing more of these energy storage or battery projects across Vermont, because the primary use, the primary use case, the primary, the way that these are used is when, it's called peak shading, with a few times a year, when within, when regional power prices, wholesale power prices for energy spike, that energy becomes very expensive for Green Mountain Power to purchase and then pass along to its customers. And that sort of high-cost energy comes at a price to Green Mountain Power's customers here in Vermont. So the battery enables them to discharge this locally stored energy during those, sort of, during those peak regional power demand events. And then they're paying effectively a much lower rate for energy that's being stored and discharged by this battery system, and they would pay for energy that's sort of shipped in from out of state. So, peak shading is the main use case. There are other uses. The batteries can provide energy in, in outage. The local grid has to be set up for that use case, and I, we would have to S G M P, whether they plan on using it for energy during an outage in that way. And there are also energy quality services that these types of batteries can provide. They can sort of help to eliminate or minimize disruptions in, in the quality of electricity that's delivered to their customers. But the primary use case is that peak shading one, and that's really all about saving money for G M P's customers. And G M P is interested in seeing more and more of these batteries across the state, and they do look like seeing them sort of located next to, co-located with existing solar projects, or in this case, there's a substation right at that corner. And being very close to a substation is just economically and from a systems operation standpoint, really beneficial.
Fewer losses.
Fewer losses, yeah, and lower than, yes, and lower interconnection costs, and sort of a lower impact across the board from a perspective of, you know, project impacts. If the project was located further from the substation, you're talking about potentially more poles and wires that could be, that could have their own impacts, natural resource or visual effects.
So would it be correct to say, then, benefits to the public of having battery storage system, a little co-located with a solar system? One is to reduce the cost of power, just overall. It could also have the cost of avoiding distribution system upgrades to sort of peaks as well. So it's saving us money, and it also could be a resilience measure during outages. So those are the public benefits, so lower costs and more secure power resources.
Perfect. That's, that's correct, yes. When you said the avoidance of other costly upgrades, in most circumstances, during, to import more power into Vermont during those peak events would require investment in transmission-level systems, and those transmission lines are the big ones that you see that are higher voltage and much more robust, and those transmission projects are expensive and take a long time to build.
Also, thinking about, you know, usual standard of importing energy from outside of the state, it's typically fossil fuel, so it's just helping clean our grid as well.
Well, that's right. I mean, I guess the other aspect of that is renewable energy is intermittent, so you create solar energy when the sun is shining. But as we all know, if we're using heat pumps at night to heat our houses, you need that electricity during off-peak periods, or a new peak is actually being created by our use of residential heat. So you can use solar to heat your house or our community by storing power that was generated during the day when the sun was shining.
Right.
So, and more and more of that is being built into the system. So this is part of the development across the state. It is not a unique thing, though Patten has a special opportunity potentially here to locate it here, and that would have value to the community.
Correct. I think sort of a natural next step is just to more detail look at what the project is physically, logistically. These batteries look like big storage containers, about the same size and shape. This project will have either three or four of those storage containers on an equipment pad that's crushed stone. And the mentions of this equipment pad are approximately 100 feet by 110 feet. It's located just to the, to the west of this existing solar array. The, the batteries themselves are those large storage container-looking boxes. Yes, all right, that's different part of this. And then there's a, there's a few associated ancillary equipment. There's cooling equipments, there's a transformer, and there's typically a controllable unit, which is, I think, the way I view it, it's a very complex computer that controls how the batteries are operating. And as I said, there's a, there will be an equipment pad for the fence around the project, and there will be an access road to provide for access from High-Low Biddy Road into the project location, and that access road will be stone or crushed gravel. We'll need access, once the project is through construction, we'll need access a handful of times a year for equipment checks, maintenance, and for all the projects that we build, whether they're solar or storage. We're always providing access for the, the local distribution, electric distribution company, which in this case is Green Mountain Power, and for any emergency services, which may need to access the site for any reason, so that access road would be there for the life of the project.
And the access road, I did tour that today, would be located where there's existing utility poles, so right along the right of way for distribution poles that are there, so it's already an area that is.
From High-Low Biddy or from River Road?
Yeah, that's right. Now, that intersection, no, you're right, similar to High-Low Biddy.
And then, oh, kind of, it's almost parallels River Road from, I have to say, the site plan.
That's the intersection of River and High-Low Biddy, so we might come in there, we might be coming off of High-Low Biddy, but it isn't existing, or either way, there's basically go around. And I want to answer your question as thoroughly as I can. This is an, like an intro, this meeting, the, our purpose, our intent being here this evening is to introduce the project. As we get further down, or further, you know, through the development process, a lot more detail, a finalized site plan will, will be delivered to you. And that access road location, it could change if there's a utility, if there's an easement for those utility poles, that is either in conflict with our proposed access road, or if that utility easement is, from a legal standpoint, too exclusive to allow for shared use for an access road through that corridor, or we might have to relocate the access road somewhere else, but we bring that to your attention.
And on that, on that note, the preliminary site plan that is included in the 45-day notice actually has an access road to the north of the solar array, which is most likely going to lead to the south. It's sort of just, this was from a couple of months ago before.
So it may be useful just to say right now, again, for purposes of sort of what this conversation is today, that what you have done is provided to the town, planning commission, Land Corps, Butters, Town Manager, a notice of intent for the company to file a petition with Public Utility Commission for a certificate of public good to ignite this facility. And this is during that 40-day, 45-day period where you're preparing that petition, and it's an opportunity for us to learn more about the project. In the end, there isn't anything, that I understand, that you're asking the town to approve here. That is not the intent of this. Rather, it's informational for us to understand. If the town is concerned about this or wants to support it, or both, or either or both, the opportunity is for the town to participate in the proceeding at the Vermont Public Utility Commission. Once you file that petition, we can file for intervener status, which would allow us to follow the proceeding and the development of, of record and any changes that are made to the project as a result of that proceeding, and we would have the opportunity to comment, should we choose to do that, and that we have a right to just petition to intervene. But for now, we're learning about the project, and this would inform of consideration by the town to participate in that public utility proceeding. But there is nothing being required of the town at this point. The one thing that I understand you'll be looking for, for your certificate of public good request, is a finding that this facility is aligned with the town plan and our land use policies. So, we're not, we're not trying to do determination of that right now. We're learning about the project, and that's the purpose of this meeting, and that would help inform the town about whether or not we would want to participate in that proceeding.
And it, sort of, it's definitely sharing information with town, and we're also looking to hear any feedback that you have immediately or, you know, in the near term, so that we can shape our petition with that, with those pieces of feedback.
I have a few questions, and I'm gonna throw my zoning administrator hat on right now. So, noise, how, how noisy is this?
The, the Public Utility Commission requires an acoustic analysis for all energy projects, whether it's a solar project or a wind project or, or a battery project. And we will conduct that acoustic analysis over the coming weeks. But my experience and the industry standard is that, you know, the P U C applies an acoustic standard for, for solar projects. It's the same for the battery projects.
Okay.
That comes from the World Health Organization, and it's some level of decibels at the exterior of residence. But these battery projects, if you go stand next to them, which I have done while they're operating, it's a very similar level of background noise to being in your kitchen while, let's say, the dishwasher and refrigerator are running. There's a hum that you can hear, and the way that sound moves across distances is a logarithmic scale, so from, from, let's say, 10 feet away, you'd be able to hear the hum, but from 50 feet or 70 feet away, you won't be able to, you can't hear it. But the P U C takes these acoustic analyses extremely seriously. They apply a very high level of scrutiny. The town will be, the full CPG petition is delivered to the town, and we can, we can send this acoustic analysis to you as soon as possible. We are aware that there's a group of residences just to the north of this, of this project. I believe there's a group of mobile homes in that area, and we always analyze the acoustic for the nearest receptors.
Okay.
The nearest residential receptors is the standard that the P U C applies. I also believe that if you went down to High-Low Biddy Road and stood near that substation, you would hear a hum. And that hum would be, there's a lot more equipment running there than there would be for this battery project, and that hum might be similar in scale to what you hear. We can send you, I know of some battery projects here in Vermont that are operational, and they're not like highly secure, so you could kind of drive right up to them. You can't get inside the project fence.
Right.
You can stand outside the project fence and hear what they sound like. Yeah.
So noise. So the noise, you know, wildlife corridors, connectivity, that kind of stuff is going to be possibly impacted, but we're not going to have that discussion tonight. The other question, I have two more, so risk management. Do you have a plan? So if there's like a lightning strike and we have a fire and our, you know, on-call volunteer fire department is responding to this battery storage, how are you handling that?
For, for every project, we'll have a, a third party, it's a data acquisition and data management. So there, there's real-time management of this equipment from a, from a remote location, or from all type of location.
Yeah.
And the second anything happens to the site, there will be a notification to this remote or off-site monitoring and operations facility. And they would, they'll notify local emergency response, they'll notify the project owner, which is Encore, and they'll dispatch someone from the operations team to the site as soon as possible. I think that the industry standard, I can't speak to the industry standard in terms of response time. A few other points are, the, the Public Utility Commission, one of the statutory criteria that we need to demonstrate that we satisfy is the protection of the public health and safety, so that the state P U C takes a very close look at public health and safety for all of these projects, whether it's battery or solar or otherwise. And we, in previous battery projects, and now across all the battery projects that we're involved with, right now, we're working with a, a battery manufacturer who's based here in Vermont, and we would provide an opportunity for the local emergency response teams to tour the manufacturing facility with the manufacturer. We would ensure that the equipment manuals and the, the emergency response protocols are in the hands of the local emergency responders.
Okay.
And we'll provide funding for the local emergency responders to get training for this specific technology that will be deployed for this project. There are different sort of variants of, like, the chemical, you know, storage devices that are used inside the battery, and they have different safety protocols in the event of an emergency. So the training needs to be specific to the manufacturer that we eventually select and then construct the project. One other note, you know, we've done our diligence on these battery projects. They'll be insured. And we have found, what we've seen across like researching events when they have happened is that they're due to improper operation of the facility, and that's something else that we would never want to happen, because the owner and operator of that facility, well, they don't want to see it. One of the main, I think, mechanisms for improper operation is charging and discharging too frequently and too quickly. They're not positive or eating, and we would never let that happen to our equipment. This is a very expensive piece of food.
Right.
We need to ensure that it's operated, you know, professionally.
Okay. My third comment I want to make is, so any access driveway, road will require an access, a highway access permit from the town. So when you cite that, some, our highway superintendent will have to come out and approve it.
Understood. We do that for every project, whether if it's a, it's a local road, it's the, it's the town highway department manager.
Yes.
If it's a state road, it's through V-Trans, that's always covered.
Okay.
And we're, we always work with the highway superintendent. Sometimes they say, we should have a gate across here so that kids aren't using their motorbikes on this little access road or something, or they don't want a gate for access.
And that might be emergency services too.
Yeah.
When they see the plan, they may require a gate.
Yep.
Because I think the solar.
There's no gate there for the solar right now. We were there today.
Okay.
There's a fence around the solar project, and the fence has a locked gate, but whenever there's a locked gate, the, the, the town municipal emergency responders have the key to that locked gate. And that would be the case for this project as well.
Okay, thank you, Jake.
Of course, my pleasure. Jeff.
Jake.
Jake.
G E.
That's a J, right?
I, I think I could talk about like where we are in the process real quick. Does that make sense to you?
Yes, I think that, that would be helpful. We have probably another fifteen minutes and I can, and I'll, there may be other questions.
And we do have a guest.
Oh, we do.
He's actually a colleague of ours.
Okay, good.
And he, Owen wanted to listen in to learn about how these meetings typically go.
All right.
Minute taking is.
Welcome, Owen.
Yes, thanks.
Thanks, everybody.
So, the purpose of the advance notice, which the town and the neighbors have received, this, we call it a forty-five day notice, but in the absence of a requirement to provide some kind of advance notice, oftentimes the town and the adjoining landowners and the community wouldn't have a lot of detail about the proposed project until after the section two forty, after the CPG petition is filed. And after the petition is filed, it's administratively much more difficult to make changes to the project. So the whole purpose of this sort of informative informational meeting is to say, here's our advance notice. This is what we're planning. And I was taking and said, like, let's hear, like, concerns, questions now. There are any changes that we should make to the project to accommodate or address those concerns or questions. Now's our time to, to work on that. So we'll just keep you informed as we get closer to having all of this information. And there will still be plenty of opportunity for questions and for, you know, changes to the project that we can make to address, to address concerns.
Okay.
The, we plan to have the, the CPG, it's a certificate of public good. That's the, that's the permit that's issued by, by the state Public Utility Commission. We plan to have that CPG petition filed when?
April.
In April. So that gives us several months to just keep you up to date and provide you with the full petition package when we have it before we file it with the state. And once that petition is filed, there's a few things here that, that are laid out in this helpful overview of the section two forty eight process that Susan has provided as two copies here on the, on the table.
Here. Just a couple of things up here. This is the actual regulation. And then this is the section two forty eights.
This is what I'm holding.
No.
Yeah, no, this, this is, what we have here, I, I kind of built some suspenders, right? We have section two forty eight from the Public Utility Commission review of the process. And you have that.
I have that, yes.
And then the town of Shasberry actually did this and they, I thought they had a nice review of how to do it. So I, I have that available here as well. So this is what it requires and how, how towns get involved and just a review about that.
I just had a question. Is this the substation?
It is.
And where?
Oh, the project?
Yeah, where will the project be?
Oh, there's another page as well with the, that's the natural resources. Here, I think. This is kind of specifically showing the environmental review and then on this page is the project layout. So there's the project.
And there's the project, there's the substation. Is that a hundred square feet?
Roughly, right. Here are the dimensions, actually. It's kind of a single digit.
Thank you very much.
I'm taking a step back from the procedural elements of the section two forty eight proceeding. Section two forty eight is the statutory reference to the statute that spells out all of the criteria which we have to address before the, the state is legally allowed to issue the section, the, the certificate of public good. And at the PUC, the Agency of Natural Resources participates for all things environmental. The Agency of Agriculture participates for all things associated with agriculture. They, they take a close look at any impacts to agricultural soils. The Department of Public Service participates to look at compliance with town and regional plans, to look at, to look at public safety, to look at the interconnection of the plans for interconnection to project to the distribution grid. And there are a handful of other state agencies. Yeah, thank you, yeah, for reasons rate payers. And, oh, the DPS also gets involved in aesthetics. Aesthetics are generally more of an issue for the, for the solar projects. And all that is to say, this is an extremely rigorous review, which will lead to results in our, our final petition for this certificate of public good is usually a few hundred pages of documents. And we're looking at, you know, the natural resources front, with, with the Agency of Natural Resources, we're looking at habitat, whether it's birds or bear corridors or deer wintering areas or bat habitat or, you know, rare threatened danger species, whether it's plants or animals, flood plains, wetlands, river corridor. So the Agency of Natural Resources has a very comprehensive set of criteria that they assess for every project. There'll be a full natural resources study that's included as a component of the certificate of public good package. There's an aesthetic component to the section two forty eight criteria. So there's, we'll have an aesthetic analysis conducted by a landscape architect. We'll also, for our assessment of the town's or of the project's compliance with the town plan, we'll have a a town planning professional review the, the town plan for us and come up with their own professional opinion on, on the project's compliance with the town plan. And that would obviously also be shared with the planning commission and town select board. We'll have an acoustic study that I mentioned. Archaeological studies. So it's a very, very comprehensive review process at the state level. And then once the whole petition is filed, the, the Public Utility Commission typically has, they'll host a site visit if there's interest from the town or from any of the state agencies. So come out to the site with the state agencies, people, you know, people from the, the host community. The planning commission, the select board will be invited to that site visit. Typically, if there is a site visit, they'll hold that site visit and a public hearing on the same day. The public hearings typically held in public forums such as this, excuse me. There's typically two components to, to a public hearing. The first part, the project developer will introduce the project in a probably more summary version than this, that it'll provide that much time typically. The hearing officer doesn't typically provide all that much time. There's a public part where the, where the developer introduces the project to the public who may attend, answer questions. And then there's the actual sort of public hearing for the PUC. The Public Utility Commission will have a hearing officer and the hearing officer will have a a court recorder person. And they'll take public comments verbally or in written form. And all of those public comments are required to be reviewed by the Public Utility Commission in assessing the project. That's all of those, sort of, in the first couple of weeks, maybe a month or two, within the filing date of the, of the CPG petition. And then all of the state agencies can ask us questions about the materials that we've submitted. It's a, it's a quasi quasi judicial process. So questions are submitted to, to the developer in the form of discovery. We provide responses in the form of discovery responses. And there could be several rounds of discovery if there are, if there are a lot of questions. Or it could be just one round of discovery if there are very limited questions. There's opportunity for the town to ask questions of the project as well, whether it's informally or as an intervener with party status. And these, this, this process, this procedural map sort of shows evidentiary hearing and briefing. I've been doing this for six years now. And Encore does everything we can to avoid that. If there's evidentiary hearings and briefings, that means that there's some unresolved issue. And that means that the CPG proceeding is going to be longer. So we, we do everything we can to avoid that stuff. So typically it's, it's, the discovery process goes right into, the discovery process ends. The agencies all say, we don't have any further questions. We're satisfied that this project has satisfied all the statutory criteria. If the town is satisfied that the project complies with the town plan and they're satisfied that we've satisfied all the statutory criteria, then we go right to the step for the proposal for decision. That's what then what the PUC would propose for their final decision, but it's still a proposal. They issue that to all the parties, including the developer. All the parties can make comments on that proposal. The PUC can then sort of react to those comments or not react. And then the PUC will issue a final, issue a final order and that is the certificate of public good. That whole process typically takes, for a solar project, it could take kind of eight months to twelve months or eight months to sixteen months. For a battery project, it might be six to ten months. Could be quicker, but not always. Let me think of one as you go. Every project is required to have a decommissioning plan in place and an established decommissioning fund. We effectively post a bond that the PUC controls and holds for the life of the project. If anything were to happen to Encore or anything were to happen to, to the project, the PUC would have funding to decommission the project and restore the site to its, you know, pre-project condition. There is no site work, no construction, nothing on site other than sort of data collection or studies is allowed to happen until after the CPG has been issued. So there's, you know, everything is on, on hold until the CPG is officially in hand. So that would mean that we'd be, if we filed for petition in April, we could have the CPG by the end of the year. Or it could be early in twenty-six. And then we could enter construction sometime in the summer of twenty twenty-six. We don't typically embark on purchasing equipment for these projects until we have all the permits in hand. And this, this CPG is the most difficult and time-consuming permit to procure. So after we procure the CPG, then we'll start talking about buying the equipment we need to build the project. That's why it's sort of delayed until we receive the CPG and venture anything. That was a lot. I'm sorry.
You've done very well.
Thank you. That was a very complete review. Owen, you have another question?
Yeah. So what is the longevity of the battery storage?
The, we have our, effectively our, we're selling the, the energy and the energy services to Green Mountain Power. The term of the contract with Green Mountain Power will be either twenty or twenty-five years. The, the battery, specifically the, the individual battery components which are inside these containers could need to be replaced during that twenty to twenty-five years. But hopefully only once, I think. They're like any other battery that you might have. As you charge and discharge them, that cycling degrades. Degrees the battery.
And we have the asset management team, Adam Clark, who monitors the
Life of the battery?
Yeah, the quality and checking in on the project and seeing how, how it's working and GMP, oh shit. There, this is something I'm not an expert in, the asset management side of things, but there are GMP and Encore eyes on the output of the project.
Yeah, I mean, sorry to interrupt you, but we'll have a contract for the provision of these energy storage services. And if those services aren't up to par, GMP will tell us. We'll be required pursuant to that contract to bring the battery back up to its full operational capacity.
Where's the waste of battery go?
I don't have an answer for that. I'll have to get that. We are confident that for solar equipment, there, there, there will be a robust recycling sort of industry in place by the time these solar projects are being decommissioned. For the batteries, I'll, I'll look into that. I honestly don't have that answer for that, I figured.
Sorry to put you on the spot, but you know. Yeah.
Some, some of the sort of more emergent battery technologies are iron-based. And I think that iron will always be available, will be, will always be able to recycle iron.
Okay.
But I'm not sure that that's the technology that would be selected for this project.
Yeah. Okay.
Question, your twenty or twenty-five year contract, is its termination then the end of project's life or might you look for another contract if your equipment is?
The, that contract has, I think, at least re-renewal terms built in. So we could renew that contract for, I think, up to three or five-year periods. And once that term runs out, we'll either decommission the project and remove it, or we seek to get a new services contract in place.
And that's after the original twenty or twenty-five years?
So we, one scenario is that it stands for a while in time with maybe necessary equipment upgrades.
Right.
Another scenario is that at the end of its contract at twenty-five years, it's terminated. And, and whenever that happens, at the, at that termination point, then the bond being held by the PUC or my office.
Company. Yeah.
You, you will remove the equipment and return the site.
So, yeah, that, that's required by law, subject to that. So yes, the answer is yes.
Is it an asset that you could then, rather than decommissioning it, sell to another entity?
Absolutely.
Okay. And then do they go through a review process?
Yes, they would. They would, that, if there was a need to, I think, after the, the term, after the terms for the extension of the existing services contract expire, you would need to effectively notify the PUC that you intend to extend the, this project beyond the approved lifetime. And the PUC would say, all right, let's treat this as effectively a whole permitting process.
Thank you.
All right. I'm just gonna note that we're, we're getting a little bit long into this, our schedule here. I think we did a late start, so my apologies for that. I just wanna make one other sort of observation about equipment. So we all know that there's a tremendous amount of innovation going on in battery technology. You know, just with the introduction of electric cars and so many different mediums that are being looked at for battery storage. It's changing all the time. Is it possible that over the life of this project, that the technology could be quite different, you know, by the time you're at the end of the twenty, twenty-five year life of the contract?
I mean, I'll just jump in and say, yes, it is. And when we're designing, I was just having a conversation with the, our head of engineering at Encore yesterday about the project design and we were saying, he was saying that we need to have a single line diagram for the design that accounts for in ten years, we will need another inverter. It will need, it will most likely need to look different in ten years. And we need to permit with that in mind. We need to kind of have a cycle plan and, you know, all the electrical diagrams in place that allow us to add and procure equipment so that we're, we, we need to understand that the permitting process should be done in a way that will allow us to keep up with the technology and what the electrical design might look like in tenderers' time.
And that's not surprising. And I think to some of the questions that the town manager was asking earlier, that as technology changes, the profile of the risk hazards or needs for maintenance or response change. And so I'm sure we would be interested as a town to make sure that we understand how it's changed and we're prepared to, you know, so we're prepared to be able to provide the services needed for public safety along that. So I, and it's not, it's not a surprise. I mean, even solar technology, you know, is, is, is changing rapidly. So I think these are the kinds of things that, you know, are a concern. I know that the compliance with the, or the alignment with the town plan is important. But from a public, a safety perspective and, and, you know, environmental perspective, those are, those are really long-term questions. So as you're designing the project, those are things that are certainly important, I know, in our community.
Yes. And, and one addition to what I'm taking and said is that if there was any change to the project that resulted in a measurable deviation from any of the, any of the metrics or qualifications that we made in the CPG petition, that would require what's called a, a substantial change petition.
Right.
A substantial change petition is effectively a whole new CPG. That would require what's called a a substantial change petition, and a substantial change petition is effectively a whole new CPG proceeding. So if the technology changed enough that we were, that we expected a different risk profile or a different acoustic signal or a different visual, uh, you know, the review of the project. That's effectively a whole new CPG proceeding, then you bring in the town in, you bring in all the agencies in.
Right.
So I think, but my, our expectation, you know, forward-looking manner is that. We're switching out battery components to keep the project running at a fully operational level for the life of the project, not that we're. Doing a comprehensive rebuild of the project and changing the battery technology i- in the absence of a review by the state and by the town.
Yeah. So, any final comments?
Well, um, just, I, there were a few things I wanted to just add in, that, um, we were mentioning community benefits earlier, um. In addition to benefits of just adding in this storage project and the peak shaving and, um, you know, peak. Peak shaving and electricity support.
I thought you were saying peak shave.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Um, there's also um, the tax benefits that this project brings with um, uh, state and. Um, municipal, I'm not knowing the exact words, um.
There's a municipal tax and then there's a statewide tax that's paid into the state education fund.
Right, um.
But not municipal.
Sorry.
But not municipal.
The the education fund is spread across the whole state, it's not.
Yeah, we know about, uh. We're not going down that rabbit hole either.
And now, um, we also, Encore has a um, community benefit program where. Are. Going to add um, commissioning of the project. Be able to have. Oh, you know, part, we're looking to, you know, choose with the partnership of the town. Look, select an entity, a community benefit organization that we can donate. Um, twenty-five thousand dollars because this project is, it's a, uh, the amount is correlated with the size of the project, so it's a five-megawatt project and. Um, we have ability here to, um, uh, work with the town to identify and need where this, um.
Philanthropic contribution.
About the contribution and, and, you know, so that's something we're excited about.
That's in alignment with being a decorporation, to uh, provide back to the community, so. That's good, you know.
Yeah, yeah, we're having our first kind of, um. There, we're.
This is a pro, this is a program we're just rolling out.
We're rolling out, we're.
We're having our first round of engagement.
We have, the first checks are being written for like a town in Maine and a town out in very, we, there, there have been, you know. The, the conversations I've been had and. Selected and it's, it's happening, so it's, it's great to see that we are able to do this now and this will be something we can offer for this project.
Well, that's, that's very helpful to know, I mean, this community is very concerned about uh, climate change. Uh, both in terms of resilience but also reducing carbon pollution. Um, we have big commitments in our town plan to that, that's different than land use, but um, that matters here significantly. Uh, economic and development that aligns with that is also really important for our community. So, um, I, I thank you for bringing this information to us and letting us know about it. Uh, I think there are many positive aspects of this and yet we also need to understand how it will fit in our community, we've heard some of the issues tonight. If we understand the process of how we can be involved in the proceeding, we also appreciate. That the dialogue between now and your, your filing is really what you're looking for and um. You can have further consideration on that, um, please do let us know if you hear from any of the others of of concern, so that we're aware of that as well.
Yes, that's uh, that's required by PUC, that that's something we can do in the absence of any partner.
Yeah, but yeah, we would like to know that.
Absolutely.
And with that, if and when that occurs. Um, and I, you know, procedurally, uh, please keep us informed, um. And uh, once a certificate of public good petition has been filed, then there is gonna be this engagement that will. Give the community a chance to take a closer look at the actual project. So please let us know if you have other questions as you're trying to do your, your due diligence research for the project and. Information we can provide and we will certainly give consideration to how we might want to be involved. Uh, PUC proceeding if and when that gets started, alright, so. With that, thank you very much for coming here and uh.
Yeah, thank you, thank you to the uh, planning commission for having us, thank you for the time, thank you for the questions, thank you for your patience, and it's getting late, so.
Yeah, that's okay.
How far is your drive?
Uh.
It's not snowing anyway.
Can you have company?
Yeah, please, okay.
Yeah. Thank you.
He's printed for your presentation, he's on leave with you as well.
Yeah, okay.
As they're leaving, I'll just note that it's so interesting for me to come back to when I worked on my career, it involved a lot of this type of work. Used to work for Public Utility Commission, um, and uh, and renewable energy and siding and all of that, so it's, it's. It's very interesting for me when that needs, how much work, um, is that, that would, and this is a very exciting thing.
Think about people, planet, profit, uh, this, I'm sure it's.
No, it's.
Everybody can count it.
Go, okay, thank you, and, uh, yes, please.
I'll, I'll just.
Thank you so much for your trip back. And now I invite our younger presenters to please uh, join us here on the table. And we said, Jeremy. Maybe one two?
Yeah.
I did, I actually printed it out and I was, I came here to take copies when I found out that you'd already done that, so. So much money to go, it all works. So, um.
I think, I think you can handle it.
I do think you can, um, so this is really an information, informational project overview of the Putney Green Commons, um. And uh, we look forward to learning about this project and um, if there are specific things. That you would need or like from the Putney Commission or the, please let us know what that would be, um, as I mentioned to. Uh, at least in time in exchange of preparing for this meeting, uh, you know, clearly the town plan and business. Uh, monitoring space is supporting the farmers market, the gardens and so, uh, it is helpful for us to know. How that's being realized, uh, through efforts like the Putney Commons, so it's helpful to us and if there's things that you're needing. Um, then let us know what those are. Again, thank you for a common introduction. Yeah, introduce yourselves and in your roles.
Green Commons of Vermont, um, board and I've been gardening and made a picture garden. Five years ago, someone asked, hey, we have to buy this land, and that's where we've been, taking small things mostly forward, a few on hold and a few backwards, but. We're getting closer, perhaps the closing date will be March, but it could also be June, so even that's unknown right now. And Tom's president.
Yeah, I'm on the board of Tom's day, um, and yeah, we've said we've been in this for maybe five or six years at least. I think since twenty eighteen or something like that, but it's been an interesting ride, um, I think as far as how.
Is is the organization now a five oh one C three, have you established that with the?
In this town, October.
In October, well, congratulations on that, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, that was, that was exciting.
And it's. Yeah, it's Green Commons of Vermont still or Putney Green Commons?
So it's Green Commons of Vermont, then the project that we're doing here with the garden and the farmers market is called the Putney Common. They needed a name for it, so it's the Putney Common.
Mm-hmm.
So you'll see that, and you'll be, you'll hear that from us, it's in, it's in the management plan, I don't know, um, everyone's access to the management plan, maybe you can, maybe, unless you need to look at that.
We have copies here, uh, let's see, um.
Oh, good. Janet might, might slip one to, and Karen.
So you've got the whole town?
I have, yes.
Having here now, I did take them out of the mailbox and let me just see, I just tried, I actually put them in packets that I was sending with the people, so. Uh, here's another copy, but Jen, would you like to see that? We have a copy.
You have a packet, Laura, so you should have it, right, did you not get a packet when you came in? Never mind, I'm, I'm just, I'm really thinking Putney Commons, doesn't that already exist?
That is, that's right.
The Putney Commons exists?
Yes.
Oh, and that project, that, that's.
Yes.
But it does exist. Singular, but this could be problematic.
Yes.
Yes, well, I just.
So we might need to revisit that.
Yes.
May also be the Putney Green.
Yeah, maybe the Putney.
And then, and then you should talk with Yellow Barn.
Yeah.
Because um, they're naming of what their, their public garden will be, yeah.
Okay, that's, yeah.
So, I think, I think something that uh, helps us understand them distinctly is good, but also their relationship is not bad, but yeah, that's, yeah, something deserves some. Thinking.
I often thought it would be nice to name it after Aiken, Aiken Green or something like that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll, that's good to know, we'll consider that.
And don't forget that Aiken noted for, um, you know, the nuclear power plant.
Oh, okay.
Um, so.
Different time period, I suppose, he may not vote for it if he were alive today. And, well. I, I think a lot of intent, um, so we're buying it from Winston Memorial Housing, it wasn't, we don't know, they own the property now, it's been divided into two parcels. Um, they're going to develop their parcels in the south of us, um, once they close, maybe mid-May. I don't know when construction can begin for them though, but that's when we're supposed to close as well, that could be put, kicked down the road, but we don't know with, with development. Um, but we're aiming for mid-May right now, um. Our main objective is to have a space where we can do together and use it for, for nature, food and with each other. And that's what we've been doing ever since we started, that's what we want to continue to do. Just been, if, if you have anything to add.
I'm sure more about that.
Um, okay, so the Putney Farmers Market, the Putney Community Garden, so we're working with Vermont Housing, uh. You know, we're working with Vermont Land Trust rather to raise them, raise the funds, they've been really instrumental, and we have a grant from. BHPB, Vermont Housing Conservation Board for about a hundred and seven thousand dollars, just covering the entire cost of the, of the property itself. And then we're raising funds and we're still continuing to raise funds for the remainder, um, covering our costs, you know, border fees and things like that.
Uh, I should just note that in the fundraising, I did make a donation towards that, so I just, for full disclosure here, I brought the donation.
Yes.
You need to.
Yes, yes.
Like, I appreciate those, and, but because you were talking to the planning commission, I should just disclose that I did.
Um, and we still have some fundraising left, but the majority, I think there's six thousand dollars, that's, that's where we're really excited about that. Um, so we're planning to preserve the community of the Putney Common, which will be renamed as Open Green Space, um. We have the conservation easement, and that's, that's partly why we're here, is we, in response to conservation easement, which is, which puts restrictions on how we use the land. In perpetuity, so in response to that, we have to come up with a management plan, what we're expecting to do, how we're gonna do it. Uh, who we're gonna present it to, things like that, how we're gonna gather input, um, things like that, so that's primarily why we're here, and what we're asking from the planning. Commission is sort of a letter of support, uh, if you choose, and also input. Once you go through the plan, I know you were only recently giving that, so you wouldn't have had time.
Yes, I haven't refused the management plan, but I just wanna understand, I mean, the Vermont Housing Conservation Board is providing funding for, for the land acquisition.
That's right, that's what the funds have been found.
That, and what they're looking for is a management plan.
That's right.
To sort of, that we write up, that you write up, to go with its conservation easement.
Right, okay.
Uh, yes, I think.
Yes.
Yes.
And that's, that's the response right there, so the conservation easement, we should give them a conservation easement as well, I will mail the planning commission a conservation easement.
Both are, both are a draft form.
Yes.
I think the conservation agreement, the easement is a further draft from this, which still has to go to some of the, of the ups in the BHPB.
I, I think you just said it, but to, to clarify, you are going to seek. Uh, you will conform with the requirements to have a conservation easement because that's one of the conditions of the hundred and seven thousand dollars you get from the Vermont.
Correct.
Okay, and that would be uh, in, in your deed.
That's right.
Yes.
Yes, it's in perpetuity. And that will, and so it will remain, it will, it, we can all, so if we ever have to sell the property, if we decide to sell it, it would have to go to another nonprofit that's similar vision, that, that, that. Conservation easement, those restrictions would be passed on to that, either a nonprofit or a government agency.
And and it could conceivably be the town of Putney.
It could conceivably be the town, but, but that, but nothing would change as far as the easement goes, it, this piece of property would have to remain as open. Green space for public use.
This is part of how they choose their mission, is the Housing Conservation Board is to put land into permanent land conservation, and that's just one way they do it is.
Yes.
Supporting the purchase of lands for that purpose, but then it does become, presumably, the, 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 yes.
And, you know, I might say that, um, from the Vermont Housing Conservation's perspective, this project fits perfect against their mission. Because it's, there's the element of the housing and the open space, housing, Vermont Housing Conservation, so. Um, I think that's why we, we received full funding for the cost and they normally only, um, they only, um, um, do about sixty percent, I think, to.
Wow, congratulations.
Yeah.
That's great.
Yeah, it was, it was pretty good.
Yeah.
Um, and so, okay, so we're feeling, I feel like I'm taking all.
Just go back.
We're feeling like this is, um, this is gonna revi, help to revitalize the village center, you know, bring tourists come in, people are always there, I mean, parking people in. Um, you know, it's just a, it's just a, a real hub of activity, um. And and we do have planned to add sort of like park-like areas, seating areas, picnic tables, tents, uh, things of that sort.
Perhaps a bit, a bit of a, a cleaning locker, log for children.
Play areas, sort of things that you, you're interested in.
Yes, yeah, just, just one of the places to be, be relaxed and be artistic, be sleepy.
Yeah. For both.
We'll have to plant a few trees, this climate change, as you know, we all know.
Yeah.
Just making it a hub, hub of summer out there.
Yeah, and part of the easement is to ensure that nearby residents have equal access, affordable access and affordable access, so. We're working with, um, we're working with Putney Cares, Putney Community Cares, which they have helped us in the past, in the community garden at least. Um, to cover costs for some, um, people who need help in that respect, financial help, so they've covered the cost per, um, uh, plots. And we're working with, maybe right now, to sort of get something more concrete, perhaps, uh, applied for, uh, grants to cover costs, maybe even for the whole garden, we don't know, but. That's kind of like, we want to ensure that it's open to everybody, and in addition to financial hardships, if people have mobility issues, we want to add some raised beds, things like that. Um, and so we're sort of just trying to think of any way we can attract anybody we can to the garden, and at least the garden and the farmers market. It's harder for me to talk about the farmers market, and we don't have representation here, but they're doing a great job and.
Two of its members, including Justin Graham Hall, who's the head of that board, is on our board as well, completely busy guarding our slides.
Yeah, pretty busy, but I might, that makes me think also that the structure of Green Commons, uh, in our bylaws, we have to have equal representation of anybody using the property. Um, so, and then, and also somebody from outside of the property, sort of community member, so we have, you know, two gardeners on the committee. So we have, you know, two gardeners on the committee, only two farmers market people and two people from the, I think I made this right, from the community itself.
Yeah.
So it's so there's equal representation from anyone using the property.
Right. The farmers market is a separate entity. Is there an agreement between the farmers market and the new, all of the property which will be Green Commons?
Yes, it will will be an umbrella, um, to the the market and the garden. Probably a typical lease, but that would just happen.
The lease arrangement, yeah.
Yes, we actually, actually, we do now because we're we're renting from, um, from Wyndham Wyndham Housing. And we have a lease with them. We.
Sublease?
Where we are, we're subleasing to the garden and the farmers market. And that those subleases, well, eventually the leases, but they will reflect the requirements of the conservation easement.
The conservation easement was awarded to the.
That's right, yes. Um, yeah, and so in addition to promoting, um, business, we're we promote advertising and support for farmers and businesses by bringing them onto the property to do some selling like that to the farmers market. Okay, so, um, I think from from the planning commission and from the town as well, which we will be going to the select board.
Actually, we've gone to the select board since this is for you, the planning commission to tackle in some way.
Oh, they don't want us to go back?
Well, we'll go back until.
Okay. Okay.
I think.
All right, well, um, so.
That's the point.
So any input we can get from you, if you have any questions now, I think we can probably do that. But any input you can give us is far, once you review the management plan, I know it's kind of long. And we can come back at your next meeting, we can do it through email, whatever you do.
Yeah, so just to be clear, what you're requesting is for us to provide our comments on the management plan for Green Commons of Vermont. But not a specific approval, but rather you want to hear from us our point of view about this. And if there are ways that we thought it could be improved, we can mention that, or we can tell you if we feel that it is looking robust, we can tell you that.
Yes.
And and of course, we can't promise because anything still has to go back through BHCB that we could take or should doesn't. We want to hear, but most.
Right. And the form of communication, you'd like a letter from us, is that, which how how do you, I mean, you're, I know you're still learning about this with the Vermont Housing Conservation Board. I'm just trying to be clear, what is that you're asking the planning commission and how we can reply? One is to review and comment on this.
Yes.
Um, in the end, you would like our support for it because that would help you close your financial arrangement with Vermont Housing Conservation Board. So I assume some kind of letter.
Yes.
Yeah.
Would be what you're looking for.
And 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 linking it into the town plans, which is especially useful.
Yes.
How it's completed.
Yes.
Yes, I I would think once we come up with a near near perfect draft, I think there might have to be a change or two if if the closing for from our for our piece of the land is spins of delayed it much longer, there might have to be some tweaks, but.
Yeah.
And Jen.
But at the moment, this is this is your work, your best work draft.
Yes.
Yes.
The management plan and your timeframe, just to be clear again, about what you're asking for, when which, when would it be? You're supposed to use for me to have this, uh, communication from from the planning.
What's what's.
But I'd like to get this in its final final form, along with the easement, this April first. Um, and I think depending on how much after the the higher level than the Conservation Stewards Group looks at this, if engaged today, then that's time. Take your time reading the comments, let's say two weeks, we could have some comments and then we can roll those into our next meeting with the HCB.
Yeah, so we we don't have a formal meeting here, right? Because we don't have, we don't have a forum, so this is an informational only thing.
Right.
Okay.
So we can't formally take any action tonight, but we can listen.
Okay.
And make a plan. Um, and, um, I need to go back and figure out, given this informational, what are the next procedure? We need to do to make sure that we have an open discussion about this. So we will need to schedule it for another meeting. Our next monthly meeting is February fourth. Um, we are already scheduled for that meeting to be meeting with our zoning advisory committee. We're we're updating our zoning rights. But I will look to see if we can put some time on that agenda. Uh, otherwise, the next monthly meeting, right, we're having a whole lot of special meetings. If you look at the agenda, you'll see a very busy schedule, um, will be the Tuesday after town meeting. So our, we meet monthly on the first Tuesday. Except when there's town meeting and we don't try to meet on the same day as town meeting, so then we do the next Tuesday.
Okay.
Uh, the only other time that happens is, um, election year, because we have to do the second Tuesday in November is when it's like last November. But in any case, what matters for you is that our next meeting is February fourth and then after that, it would be, I think it's twelve in March or something like that.
Which would still be okay if we have, if it goes into March.
Yeah.
Because we we have, all we need to do is submit it by April first.
Yeah.
Really even April fifteenth, but we won't say that.
No, I'm sorry to say.
Well, do the best we can.
Well, we'll do the best we can and we just got this, I'll review it, um, and I will see if I can put a a ten minute item, you know, a short item on our agenda for February. Uh, just to make sure we have properly noted that we received it, um, whether or not we would have a letter then ready then, I don't know, but we could. We can, we can visit this then and if I can close it, we will close it, if not, we will close it in the March meeting.
Okay.
I thought.
Sorry. I have a hand.
Yeah.
Okay.
Go ahead, Jeff, you're on the board.
Commons of Vermont Directors, you mentioned that you were getting a governance policy that there would be representatives of the farmers market and the garden.
Yeah.
As, uh, as members of the Board of Directors.
That's right.
Who are some?
We already have that policy, so it's already in effect. Um, Louise and I, Justin Brown Hall, B R A M, A P N O M. Um, and Alexis Dosas, T O S H A S, and Risa Miller.
And is there?
That's our.
Okay. What is the process for getting appointed or running for the Board of Directors?
Do you have bylaws?
We do have elections, we have bylaws.
I think that's what we want, I think that's what.
Yeah.
Yeah, it just wasn't covered in your, in your plan here.
Yeah, maybe it shouldn't be, yeah, that's a good point.
Can we clarify what?
Sure.
Uh, I guess my clarification is that it's you're in a unique, public-private role, uh, a public, a space that you want to offer to the public. Control of which sounds like it will be in the Board of Directors and it's not clear how you become a board, get to become on the Board of Directors. And also the relationship between the actions that you take sort of in this public sphere and municipal, your your discussions with the municipality.
Okay. We'll find you, find some some information.
Yeah, I think, again, I think your bylaws will go a long way to answering these questions.
Yeah.
Something useful to look at your articles of incorporation, which you use to do your 501(c)(3).
Yes.
Location, which clarifies for us your mission and purpose. So that's sort of the starting document and then the next.
Skinned chili in here.
Yeah.
He goes off at eight.
There's a good reason for that.
Right. Sorry.
I could have told you.
Anyway, I'm just trying to say that you probably have one documents, that's what I'm trying to do. Map out for you. And I think that they would be a good accompaniment for us to understand the management plan, just to understand the organizational design and process so that we can look at this in next context. So that make that a request, even though it's informational, if they could provide additional information so that when we meet in February, we can be talking about that as well.
Yeah, so I'll send the, um, the bylaw here and the easement itself.
That that will be very helpful.
And if I come across anything else, I think it's pertinent to send it.
Yeah, if there's anything else from the Vermont Housing Conservation Board, because partly your request here is because of requests they have of you. So if anything else that can help us understand is that.
Certainly wants.
I get that. Right. They don't try to make it hard.
No. We agree to work with them.
Yes.
It's just that we're we're navigating this blindly, you know, throughout the time.
No, you're newbies.
Yeah, we're newbies, there's no question.
And so I, but I think I understand your request now, you're looking for a letter of support for this, we need to review it. This additional information will inform my review. Let's visit again at the February meeting and if we feel that that's a time that we could come to some decision, great, or if more reviews needed, we will close it at the March meeting.
I think specifically, we're looking for a letter of support for the project itself.
Yes.
And then your approval of the management plan and any input you have on the management plan.
Yeah.
But but project, what do you need?
The the project of buying this property and using it as an open green space for public use.
I think the emphasis is on whether a management plan satisfies what we saw on the plan.
Hey, when you sent to us this additional material, because I know that you're learning about this all in real time from the Vermont Housing Conservation Board. Can you send to us something very specific about what you're looking for?
Ah, that's, that's a good idea.
I think that makes it really clear for us to be acting on. And then we will present that as public information at the the February meeting. Whether we're prepared to do that at that meeting, let's see. We have a mighty set of things to do in the next few weeks.
Yes. Uh, there's a hand.
So Karen has a.
I have a, I have a question.
Yes.
Um, with this management plan, um, are you going to have a site plan included with this?
Yeah, yes.
Um, will it show where you're going to plant trees? And I say this because there's underground utilities.
Okay.
And water and sewer. So trees could be a problem.
Okay.
And it, so I would, a site plan with landscaping.
Maybe we should present a site plan with the utilities where they are.
Can can we check in a few?
And then and then sort of have that as a no planting zone or something to that effect.
Yeah.
I think simply say that any trees that are planted will take them to a joint.
With adventure.
I don't like red flags out there.
But it's clear, this site plan is showing where the utilities are, is a great way to make sure everybody's on the same page.
Yeah. I think. Yeah. In fact, our our easement says something about easements for you.
Well, that might be actually a good addition to your management plan, isn't it?
Yeah.
A site plan needs to clarify.
Yeah, we don't want no roots in the water main.
Oh, I don't, yeah, I don't think, I don't think, I don't think there's water going across the property.
We will.
There isn't, there isn't.
There will be.
And like what we told you, we're going to tap in with it.
Right, so when the new project gets underway, they will, there will be water and sewer. It will be crossing across to the pump station. You're going to have to remember there's a sidewalk.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Yeah. Good, thank you Karen, that's helpful.
Yes.
That's very helpful.
Yeah.
Wasn't there a review of the farmers market as a change of use? Didn't the DRB take?
We, yes, yes. Yeah. Um, I don't know if there was an official, um, site plan in there.
But there was a review.
Yes.
I'm just.
Yes.
You know, you know my memory, so.
Yeah, no.
I recall in.
There was a permit. We were, yes, we did go on a site visit, yes.
For me?
Um, I don't. No, I don't believe you were. Yes, they do, and it runs with the land, so.
The, um, the last, on the last page of this document is another photograph, that's supposed to have lines showing the property boundaries and over a column, which in the management plan, it can be the community garden complex. Which is set aside within the easement to give us some some more freedom to do, um, whatever we're trying to do, build raised beds or something like that, without having to go to, you know, the, uh, BHCB. So that's going to be, that will change that last picture, which is blank right now.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, we'll look for an updated version of this with the site plan and associated other documents. That would be great, if you can make it one whole thing where we're feeling like we're speaking to everybody, that makes it easier for us.
Yeah.
And I will report about this to the select board, it'll be my monthly meeting.
Excellent.
Now we go home.
And now we can say thank you. And, uh, I will, I have one other item on our agenda, I just, uh, just because I English. And that is to review that we have a number of meetings in January and February. So our next one is next Tuesday, that will be a special meeting on Housing Needs and Action Plan with consultants and. We have a January thirtieth community meeting, there's some on housing strategies, we'll be getting, I know that about that quite soon, I'm putting notes up about that. Uh, then our next monthly meeting, February fourth, is the zoning bylaw modernization committee, but we will add to it a time to talk about the Green Commons. Um, and then we need another special meeting on February tenth, which will be again, a final meeting of the Housing Needs and Action Plan Committee and consultants before making a presentation to the select board at their final meeting in this term, which is February nineteenth. So we are, we've got a lot going on, I just wanted to make sure that that's publicly, everybody knows that this is being recorded, um, but also for understanding, I'm taking every time we've got big projects to, that. But we will make time for this to return February.
Appreciate that and and thank you for the opportunity to have this conversation, it's helpful and you're.
And this meeting is adjourned.
Thanks.
So thank you Karen for monitoring the.